Hey, Dave.
Hi, uh, we're down two to one right now. Hi, Happy, will you pray for me tonight? I'll pray for you next time, just in case the crowd gets up.
Uh, go ahead.
Will you pray for me?
No, I cannot. I cannot. You should be in the ballgame anyway.
Hey, pray, Happy, you need it.
No, go ahead. Hey, I'm at home.
Patrick, I can pray for you.
Thank you, Chad. If you'll pray, I'll, I'll get to you the next time.
He signed up for it. He signed up for it.
Happy, put your chips down and you could have prayed for the man.
I ain't had supper yet.
Well, you're crunching off aloud, put it on mute.
Be careful who you pray.
Boy, good.
Patrick, are you saying, are you saying you want, uh, somebody to do the invocation for you tonight?
Yes, please say it if you could.
Chastity doing it.
Chastity, who, who volunteered? Anybody?
I, I don't mind to do it for him at all.
All right, we'll swap this out here. I'm showing it seven o'clock, so let's get, let's get underway and start with the, uh, call to order, have a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, united in liberty, justice, for all. Like, we have the reverb on when y'all are coming in behind us, so they get confused. Invocation tonight will be given by Chastity Lowry.
Good value your heads, please. Dear gracious and heavenly Father, Lord, we come for you. Just praise you, Lord, for all the blessings that you've given us in our community. We ask you, Lord, that you be with us constantly, of the city and the business of the city and more. Ask all these things.
Ivan Mark, can we have a roll call, please?
Benale?
Present.
Dawn? Patrick?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
Honeycutt?
Here.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes, ma'am.
Lowry?
Here.
Neil?
Here.
Norris?
Here.
Trigg?
Here.
Witcher?
Here.
It gets to any point where any of the council people cannot hear us here at City Hall, uh, cut in and tell us, and I'll take my mask off and we'll turn this up if we need to. So I want to make sure everybody is aware that if you can't hear us, tell us and stop us and we'll, we'll make it where you can. Uh, before you, you, you have before you the minutes of special call via remote video, uh, council meeting on Monday, March twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. You've had time to look over that. If anybody has any changes, deletions, or, um, if not, I'll accept a motion to accept those minutes as written and sent to you.
Motion, Lowry.
Second, Benale.
Councilman Lowry and a second by Councilman Benale. All those in favor signify the same eye.
Aye.
A pass. Uh, first order of, uh, under old business, second reading order is twenty twenty-one dash, an order, an ordinance relating to the transfer of real estate owned by the city as part of excess land set aside by the city recorded flat, uh, being zero point one six seven or surplus property on Park Drive.
City of Glasgow ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash blank, an ordinance relating to the transfer of real estate owned by the city of Glasgow as part of excess land set aside to the city on a recorded flat being zero point one six seven acres of surplus property located on Park Drive. Whereas the city of Glasgow owns the right of way for Park Drive in the city of Glasgow by virtue of a flat recorded indeed looked sixty, paid six hundred in the office of the Barron County Court of Court many years ago. And whereas the right of way owned by the city is several feet wider than it needs to be on the north side of the right of way, the strip in question being approximately twenty-two feet wider than necessary on one end and eight feet plus wider than necessary on the other end. The excess land has no use to the city nor any one other than the adjoining property owner, Mr. Kidd, and the adjoining land owner has been mowing the property for years at his expense. And whereas a surplus property in question should be due to Mr. and Ms. Kidd for no consideration except that they should pay the cost of all flat surveys and recording fees, the deed shall carry the restriction that said land shall be restricted to single-family residential use only. A description is attached as attachment one and a flat is attached as attachment two and both incorporated herein by reference. Now therefore, be hereby ordained by the city of Glasgow as follows, section number one. The surplus property being zero point one six seven acres of excess right of way on the north side of Park Drive in the city of Glasgow is represented in the attached description of flat, shall be dated to Benjamin P. Kidd and his wife Tiffany D. Kidd for no consideration but with grantees paying all survey, flat, recording and other costs associated with transfer. The deed shall carry the restriction that said land shall be restricted to single-family residential use only. Section number two, that the mayor of Glasgow is hereby authorized and directed to complete this transaction and to sign all documents necessary to complete the transaction. Section number three, that this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced strong and after its stated passage and publication as required by law, Harold Armstrong Mayor at this Mona Simmons City Clerk. First reading, March twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. Second reading, April twelfth, twenty twenty-one.
Having heard the second reading of this ordinance, do I have a motion to accept?
Motion.
Have a motion by, uh, Councilman Trapp, uh, Councilman Norris and a second by, was that, oh, Witcher, I'm sorry, second by Witcher. Being the second reading, we'll have a roll call.
Benale?
Aye.
Dawn?
Yes, ma'am.
Honeycutt?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes, ma'am.
Lowry?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Trigg?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Second reading passes. Next item is new business, resolution twenty twenty-one, resolution authorizing and directing April Russell, the director of the Office of Grant Oversight to apply for a grant.
City of Glasgow Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash blank, a resolution authorizing and directing April Russell, Director of Office of Grant Oversight, to apply for a grant from the Division of Waste Management Waste Tire Program for pouring place rubber surface for the Parks and Recreation Department. Be hereby resolved by the City of Glasgow Kentucky as follows. Number one, that April Russell, Director of the Office of Grant Oversight, shall be and hereby is authorized and directed to make application on the city's behalf with the Kentucky Division of Waste Management Waste Tire Program for a seventy-five twenty-five grant in the amount of fifty-six thousand eight hundred dollars for pouring place rubber surface for the Parks and Recreation Department. This is a matching grant and the city is required to match the twenty-five percent sum of fourteen thousand two hundred dollars by in-kind labor and or cash. Be further resolved by the City of Glasgow Kentucky that Harold Armstrong, Mayor of the City of Glasgow, shall be and hereby is authorized and directed to execute any and all documents necessary in order to make application for said grant. And the City of Glasgow is hereby committed to meet its match obligation of fourteen thousand two hundred dollars of in-kind labor, cash, so adopted this twelfth day of April, twenty twenty-one. Harold Armstrong Mayor at this Mona Simmons City Clerk.
Having heard this resolution, do I have a motion to accept it as read?
Motion, Lowry.
Motion by, uh, Kirkpatrick and a second by Lowry. All those in favor of this resolution signify the same eye.
Aye.
Any opposed to the resolution, like sign? Resolution passes. Next item is resolution twenty twenty-one, a resolution for the City of Glasgow to make application for Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Services Compensation Safety Grant.
City of Glasgow Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash blank, a resolution for the City of Glasgow to make application for a Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Services Compensation Safety Grant. Be hereby resolved by the City of Glasgow, Kentucky, that April Russell, Grant Writer for the City of Glasgow, shall be and hereby is authorized and directed to make application on behalf of the city for a grant in the amount of three thousand dollars administered through the Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Services Compensation Safety Grant, which will be used if received for the purpose of personal protective equipment for Glasgow Department of Public Works, personnel protective equipment for Glasgow Police Department and personnel protective equipment for Glasgow Parks and Recreation and for a virtual twenty twenty-one risk and safety conference. The grant has a match obligation being three thousand dollars. Be further resolved by the City of Glasgow, Kentucky, that Harold Armstrong, Mayor of the City of Glasgow, shall be and hereby is authorized and directed to execute any and all documents necessary in order to make application for said grant. So adopted this twelfth day of April, twenty twenty-one. Harold Armstrong Mayor, Mona Simmons City Clerk.
Having heard this resolution, do I have a motion to accept it as read?
Kirkpatrick.
Kirkpatrick's made the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Witcher, all those in favor signify the same eye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Resolution passes. The next item is resolution twenty twenty-one, a resolution of the city of Glasgow to make application for a composting grant administered by the Kentucky Pride Fund.
City of Glasgow Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash blank, a resolution for the City of Glasgow to make application for a composting grant administered by the Kentucky Pride Fund. Be hereby resolved by the City of Glasgow, Kentucky, that April Russell, Grant Writer for the City of Glasgow, shall be and hereby is authorized and directed to make application on behalf of the city for a grant in the amount of fifty-five thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars administered through the Kentucky Pride Fund for composting grant, which will be used if received for the purpose of purchasing composting equipment. This grant has a seventy-five twenty-five match with in-kind match being twenty-two thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars. Be further resolved by the City of Glasgow, Kentucky, that Harold Armstrong, Mayor of the City of Glasgow, shall be and hereby is authorized and directed to execute any and all documents necessary in order to make application for said grant. So adopted this twelfth day of April, twenty twenty-one. Harold Armstrong Mayor, Mona Simmons City Clerk.
Having heard this resolution, do I have a motion to accept it as read?
Motion by Benale.
Have a motion by Benale and a second by,
Second, Lowry.
Patrick Lowry, I guess I'll give it to one. How about Lowry, Councilman Lowry, thank you. All those in favor signify the same eye.
Aye.
Any opposed to it, like sign? Resolution passes. This next resolution, just to give you some insights, you all have a copy of the information sheet along with the, uh, example of the, uh, uh, declaration that would be obligated for us to sign. But it's between, uh, it's a resolution authorizing participation in Kentucky League of Cities Investment Pool. It's something that we can invest in that'll pay about three and a half or four times what we're getting through a local bank or any other investment company and it's insured. Uh, but once you've read it, if you have some questions, we'll try to answer it. Joe and Stephanie neither one are here tonight, but I think all the information's on this, in this bulletin. But, um, having heard that, we'll, we'll read the resolution and then we'll vote on it and call for, or ask any questions you might have.
City of Glasgow Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash blank, authorizing participation in the Kentucky League of Cities Investment Pool Plus. Whereas the city of Glasgow, the city has been presented with and has re- reviewed an information statement dated as of July first, two thousand nineteen, for a cash management and investment program known as the Kentucky League of Cities Investment Pool Plus. And whereas the city has determined that participation in this program for the purpose of the joint investment of monies with other local governments will result in economies of scale and should enhance investment earnings accruing to the city while preserving the principle of the city's investment. Now therefore, be resolved by the governing body of the city as follows. Number one, the city is a public agency as defined in KRS sixty-five point two-three-oh and eligible under KRS sixty-five point two-four-oh to join the interlocal agreement with the existing parties to this agreement. Number two, the interlocal cooperation agreement and the Declaration of Trust as described in the information statement are hereby adopted and approved and the mayor or the chief executive officer of the city is hereby authorized to execute and deliver the interlocal cooperation agreement and otherwise to evidence the city's approval and participation in the program including the execution and delivery of all documents and the taking of other actions as may be necessary or appropriate. And the city is hereby authorized to attest such signature and to sign such documents and take such actions as foregone official shall direct their respective signatures to constitute conclusive evidence of their approval of the documents they sign. Number three, the mayor, finance officer and city treasurer hereby are designated as authorized officials with authority to effectuate the investment and withdrawals of money from time to time in accordance with the Declaration of Trust. The city shall advise the fund of any changes in authorized officials in accordance with procedures established by the fund. Number four, the provisions of this resolution are severable and if any section, phrase or provision thereof shall for any reason be declared invalid or unenforceable, such declarations shall not affect the validity of the remainder thereof. If any other resolution, order or part thereof is in conflict with the provision thereof, the provision thereof shall prevail and be given effect. This resolution shall be effective immediately upon its enactment enacted this twelfth day of April, twenty twenty-one. Harold Armstrong Mayor, Mona Simmons City Clerk.
Having heard this resolution, do I have a motion to accept it as read?
Motion by Benale.
Motion by Benale, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by,
Witcher.
Witcher. Uh, at this time, does anybody have any questions?
Who is, who's initiating this and what's the intent of it?
It's to earn about four times as much on our investment that we are now and we acquired all over the place and, uh, uh, because we were, felt like it, we had some excess funds that didn't have to be used like this year or next year, but would have been needed in the future. So we, we checked and, uh, this Kentucky, uh, KLC pool plus has the highest rate, I think it's up to four percent interest. And, uh, we have to pay as much as a quarter of, uh, of, uh, of that four percent to KLC, depending on how much we invest. But, uh, it's basically going to net us about two and a half or three times what we're earning now.
What percentage of the finances of our city would be, uh, put in this account?
Uh,
like twenty percent, fifty percent? Does that take away the investments in the local banks?
No, no, which ones come up due for us to redo? I think it could be as high as two million dollars.
Is there a minimum amount that we have to use in this account?
Uh, you mean that we have to invest?
Yes.
I think that you can invest as little as fifty thousand dollars. What they've done is they went through everything that didn't have to be like the, uh, that didn't have to be used in the next twenty-four months and was going to tie it up for one year. And then at the end of that one year, if we needed it, we could pull it and if we needed part of it, we could pull part of it and keep the other back up unless we found an investment group that would be legal for us to use and would pay us equal amount or better.
Has, was this vetted through the finance committee?
The finance committee hadn't made it.
We have looked at this similar program last year and reviewed it.
What did you think?
Oh, I could.
Yeah, this is a fund that, that allows us diversification, you know, in our investment. I mean, you're talking about excess funds for the city. You're not talking about the operating accounts. Uh, there is really no minimum that we've got to have in the account. Uh, we can get money out of the account back in two days. Uh, you know, no, there's no transaction fees to it. Gives us, so therefore there's good liquidity in the fund. I mean, there's a, a range of investments from uh, government bonds to corporate bonds, uh, even some equity investments and then money market funds. So it, it is a good opportunity for us to diverse a little bit in our, uh, holdings, our cash and, uh, earn some additional revenue.
Well, the, the, I got another question. That is, you're saying we would be using the excess funds and wouldn't we just transferring money from land management over to the, uh, regular budget? So do we have any excess?
Yes, we do. That was tied up previous to that. What that was was for equipment, stuff that we were spending right now that was in the budget, but a couple of it never was actually as much. That one piece of equipment that tore up and went down on us, we didn't have that in the budget. But most everything, if you're looking for, we transferred the money. Some of it was in insurance checks, uh, from our cruiser and then we bought some, uh, other police cars. So some of that stuff was in the budget. We already had the money in there, but it was not in the right account to, to draw down on what we could pay these things that we have to pay.
Some of, some of the money we have too is restricted in that, uh, we have to hold it and not spend it until it's spent for a particular purpose. So we can invest in these funds until that purpose is ready to be paid for.
All right, so before we make the final or make a decision to do the investment, will this, will this whole package go back to the finance committee? Then the finance committee will say, press on. Say we give you permission to do that, then the finance committee will make that decision? Or is it just the mayor, finance officer and city treasurer?
We can, we'll take it back to the finance committee. We don't have to do this, I think, till June first. So we could, we could get for sure how much we're going to invest and for sure what kind of interest rate we're going to get. And then we can bring it back before the finance committee and then it could report to you all maybe the next meeting. If KLC will give us those numbers in the next two weeks.
Well, I think it begs the question, if it was good last year, then why are we waiting to this year? I mean, I'm not against it.
Well, we, most of the money was tied up last year for another twelve months on, uh, the one problem. But, uh, the reason that we looked at it this time is because everybody wanted to try to make more with our money. And, uh, we went out to every direction we could and this came back in as far above the best opportunity we had for it. Can I call for the question? Call for the question. Uh, do I, let's see, I've already had a motion and a second. Everybody that, uh, approves this resolution is read, signify the same eye.
Aye.
Does it check, like sign? Resolution passes. And, uh, next finance committee meeting, I'll instruct Joe and, um, Stephanie to get those numbers back from, uh, KLC and present them to you guys and y'all can look it over and see if it needs tricking up a little bit or if it's good like it is. And then we'll bring it before the next city council meeting as an informative, uh, information. So you'll know exactly what we can expect to earn and what exactly we'll net out with the whole thing. Uh, next item on the agenda is a municipal order, uh, appointment of Janice Turner to the Historic Preservation Committee. And the reason we're just now getting here with that one is everybody else was reappointed our last meeting. But we had to have one person that no longer able to serve. We had to have one person on the, uh, planning zoning board to be on this committee. And I, I had a hard time getting in touch with Janice, but when I finally did, she agreed to serve. That's the reason it didn't come through the last time because I didn't have a final, uh, approval from her that she would be willing to serve on this committee.
City of Glasgow Municipal Order number twenty twenty-one dash blank, on order of the mayor, Janice Turner, is hereby appointed to the Historic Preservation Committee to serve as a joint city county planning commission representative. This appointment shall be a two-year term expiring March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three and subject to the approval of the Glasgow City Council this twelfth day of April, twenty twenty-one. Harold Armstrong Mayor, Mona Simmons City Clerk.
Uh, do I have a motion to accept this municipal order?
Motion, Kirkpatrick.
Kirkpatrick and a second by,
Second.
Second by Neil, all those in favor signify the same eye.
Aye.
Anyone that opposes, like sign? The municipal order passes. And then while we're on this, in your package, you have a, a, another appointment that's due the end of this month. So we're giving you that, uh, and that's a reappointment. Matter of fact, he's been on there for a few years. So if you want to look at that, so our next meeting, we'll be bringing that forward for a vote also. And that, that ends the agenda for tonight. But under announcement of, uh, uh, the main, uh, information for you, we put it on, uh, Facebook and website and everything else. Street department is working on a portion of steeple chase resurfacing and, and doing some, uh, some dirt work in order to keep, uh, the sides of the street from falling in. And beginning April the twelfth, which is today, there'll be no, uh, and it'll be no later than the twenty-sixth, it'll be closed and through traffic. You can get through from either side wherever they're working and go in to get in and out, but you can't just drive through because they're going to have part of the road shut down working on it. So if any of you, uh, do not, uh, or if any of you live out there or have any friends that live out there, make sure that they've got the mail out and the information because that's going to be a, a heavy traffic problem if, uh, everybody's not aware that they got to go in one way or out or in the other way. They will still receive the garbage pickup as scheduled. They may have to walk the, the garbage pickups, the trucks may have to walk the garbage cans down for a little small area and load it, but it'll be able to pick it up on the garbage day without, uh, breaking up the service. And, uh, unless something goes terribly wrong with our positivities right in the city, I mean, in the state, our next meeting will be April the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one here and it'll be in person. And if any of you that are out there, any of the council members have not been vaccinated, you don't feel good about meeting up here on, with a mask and that type of thing, uh, you're welcome to speak up right now and we'll try to make other arrangements for that, uh, for that council person. So is everybody out there in tune with me trying to meet in person the twenty-sixth?
I'm not sure yet, but I'll let you know.
Okay. All right. But hopefully, hopefully this will get us back to as near normal as we've had it for a while. And again, if you come up and you think, okay, I don't feel comfortable just yet, then we'll try to set you up just like we are right now with the Zoom and we'll try to have that one on Zoom and the rest of us in person. As long as we can see your face, uh, on the screen, uh, you'll be able to attend and do everything else. Is there any other announcements?
Mary, uh, I've got one quick announcement. I want to thank the housing department, well, the health department for, uh, being the, the ones giving the vaccines. The, the governor actually ended up giving us two to three hundred shots to distribute at the Liberty District. Uh, the, the housing authority reached out to their staff and membership. They came forward, uh, the electric plant board also had members. The word was put out through a lot of agencies within the city for anyone who wanted to get a vaccine. Unfortunately, as you know, as everybody's aware, we, uh, we ended up with fifty shots left over. And I mean, we did every, we didn't have any files, doses left in any vials. We used all the open ones, but we still ended up with fifty doses left over and it wasn't due to reach out from this community. And it wasn't due to reach out from this community because this community has stepped forward a lot. So I just want to say thank you from the Liberty District and Pastor Rice for your support uh, during the three events that we've held.
Very good. Any other announcements? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Motion, Lowry.
Motion from Lowry and a second from
Second.
Well, Neil. You are adjourned. Thank you all for going through this Zoom one more time and maybe this will be the last of it. But thank you all for your participation.
Thank you.